Been put in place and seating has been arranged to reflect the advice of health authorities. On Friday, the 24th of April, the COVID-19 Omnibus Emergency Measures Act 2020 provides for council to meet and is deemed to be open to the public where a meeting is streamed live on the internet. In accordance with Section 3951A of those provisions, the public are not attending the meeting in person, but are able to watch this meeting via Facebook Live on Wyndham City Living Facebook page. In the spirit of reconciliation, before we begin this meeting, I acknowledge the peoples of the Coolah Nation as the traditional owners of the land on which Wyndham is being built, and we pay our respects to elders past and present. Please stand for the opening prayer and welcome. We pray for guidance in the council's decision-making to achieve the best outcome for the people of Wyndham. Please be seated. Finally, as indicated earlier, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the internet. The recording will be archived and made available on council's website. Item number two, apologies and requests for leave. Madam CEO, do we have any apologies or requests for leave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are nil this evening.
Okay, as there are nil, we will proceed to the next item. Item number three, declaration by councillors of disclosure of conflict of interest and/or conflicting personal interest in any items of the agenda. Councillors, yes, councillor McIlhany.
Yes, I'll be declaring a conflict on 6.4.1 Planning Permit, WYP 11249/18, Section 78 of the Local Government Act Close Association. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor McIlhany. Are there any others? Councillor Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 6.4.1 Planning Permit Application, WYP 11249/18.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Marcus, noted. And when we get to that item, both of you will leave the room. Okay, thank you. Item number four, confirmation of minutes of previous meeting, that the minutes of the OCM held on Tuesday, the 7th of April 2020, as prepared and circulated, be confirmed. Do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard and councillor Givens can second. Thank you. I will now put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carry it. Item number five, deputation and presentations, there are nil. Item number six, officers' reports, 6.1 petitions, nil. 6.2 strategic reports, also nil. 6.3 policy and advocacy, 6.3.1 Social and Economic Inclusion Framework Draft. Report is outlined on pages seven to 11, with the recommendation on page seven and the attachments on pages 12 to 24. Do I have a mover for the item? Councillor Villa Gonzalo, councillor An is the second. Councillor Villa Gonzalo, do you wish to speak to the item? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I have been a resident of Wyndham for almost 32 years. When my family and I moved to Happerscossie in 1988, the population of our city was then 55,000. Today, we have a population of around 280,000 and growing faster than any local government area in Victoria. In 2019, 42% of our population were born overseas, compared to 34% for the Greater Melbourne area. Unemployment in our city last year was at 5.4% compared to 4.9% in the Greater Melbourne area and Victoria. So, Mr. Mayor, compared to other cities and municipalities in Victoria, we have a larger, more diverse population with a higher rate of unemployment and disadvantage. The COVID-19 crisis is just making the situation worse for us with federal government forecasting an unemployment rate for the whole country greater than 10%. Wyndham can expect a higher rate. This council's job is not just to provide the basic services of health, planning and building control, waste and environmental management and human and community services, but also to support our businesses and grow our local economy. At this time of greater need in our community, the need for local jobs for our local residents is becoming more and more important. Having a job or owning a business makes a significant difference in the ability of a person to feel connected and then contribute to community life. We want our residents to feel they belong to our community and know that their community and council cares for them. We want to help them as much as we can for them to meet their basic needs and be able and wanting to contribute or give back to our community. This is what this framework is about, the social and economic inclusion of our residents. The significant word is inclusion, and the purpose is to address inequalities in our community. This framework was developed in close consultation with a cultural diversity portfolio of which I was involved as a portfolio member prior to becoming a councillor in 2016. The portfolio committee then developed the multicultural policy mentioned in the framework document as its starting point. I'm also the current Chair of the Future Focused Economy Portfolio, which was likewise consulted in the development of this framework. In addition, I am one of the councillors representing council in the Social and Economic Inclusion Task Force. This council is continuing to support the creation of more local jobs for local residents. We need to look at more opportunities to attract more businesses to Wyndham. We need to advocate for state and federal government to locate services in our city that will create more local jobs. We need this framework to address the growing need to prepare our residents for those much-needed jobs in our city and surrounding suburbs, and help residents where possible to get those jobs. This framework is another innovation of Wyndham Council and now can go through community consultation if we pass this tonight. I encourage my fellow councillors to vote yes unanimously as this framework expresses what we all have campaigned and advocated for. Mr. Mayor and fellow councillors, we are all in this together. We can't leave any of our residents behind. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Villa Gonzalo. Are there any other speakers on the item? Councillor Marcus.
Thank you. I've lived here in this city since 1969, and I've been a businessperson all of this time in a building business and also in retail and now as an event coordinator. And so what I would like to say, this draft framework policy is a very good and a very exciting policy for the past times, that we all came to accept and we took for granted. But as each day comes and goes, there is more gloom and more gloom. I was keen to see alternative documentation in this policy for beyond the COVID-19 pandemic. I, like many other businesspeople and many other vulnerable people, have been through very tough times, the same as many other people, but none as tough as what we are experiencing now. Each day, it seems to get worse and more businesses are closing down, never to ever open their doors again. And more people are reaching out for help and support. And listening to all the economists, the tougher times are here and will hit even harder. So what I would like to do and see is all of our residents come together to work with council to see what we can put into this draft document and come back with some excellent ideas on a way forward. We have to be all in this together because it's just so sad seeing what is happening out there in the meantime. So I would be very happy to see when the draft document comes back from the people that we will have more and exciting and innovation ideas to put into this policy so that we can get some of our businesspeople, and they are what we depend on, the first people we go to. So hopefully, we will have a lot of people look at this document and come back, and I'll do everything I can. I've already spoken to some ministers about getting some some of the fashion industry up and running, so I hope I can do my bit as far as that is concerned with a nice fashion incubator perhaps at the Werribee Plaza. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Marcus. Councillor An, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. Our support office's recommendations that council endorsed the draft framework for public exhibition for a period of four weeks commencing tomorrow. In 2014, council adopted the Wyndham Multicultural Policy and Action Plan. Both councillor Walter Villa Gonzalo and myself were involved in the development of the policy as the portfolio committee member. It is great to see the Social and Economic Inclusion Framework builds on that multicultural policy and seeks to continue to position Wyndham's multicultural identity at the source of pride. Council has been doing a range of work over the last six weeks to support the city's resilience in social and economic terms. And this is another example of our commitment to being proactive in planning for the social and economic future of our city. As the portfolio holder for Smart City, I have always been a strong advocate for how technology can be used to support greater connectivity across our community. We have seen the benefits of using technology in response to COVID-19 and believe there is more scope in using technology to connect our community. This framework emphasised the importance of stronger networks and relationships in our city. A welcoming, more inclusive and better-connected community does not happen on its own, and it is the responsibility of all of us to make this a reality. This framework also emphasised the benefits of community strengthening approach being applied to our business and industry sectors by prioritising local pathways from education to employment and putting local jobs for local people at the centre of our practice. We can create a window where people from all backgrounds and all walks of life can find opportunity. And I echo councillor Walter Villa Gonzalo's point that I think this is a very important framework, and I do encourage our residents to have a look at this draft framework and provide us your valuable feedback. Thank you, Miss Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor An. Councillor McIlhany, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to begin by recognising that our community and our country is facing uncertain economic conditions at the moment, and the resulting impacts on our mental health and our community is still being really understood. But perhaps these times show us how social and economic fabric of our community is woven together, and how planning for social and economic initiatives together is helpful. As the portfolio holder for Safer Communities, I've heard many stories of people who have been part of the justice system but have managed to turn their life around. Employment is always a feature of those stories as it remains a critical part of how we all feel connected to our community and feel the ability to contribute. The main point of inclusion is the idea of togetherness and connected, and it is the central point of this framework. This policy gives you the opportunity to join up so many areas, including the SMART strategy, the learning community strategy, the economic growth strategy, the volunteering strategy and sports and environment strategy. As we take this to the community for their input, and your input is extremely important, and views, I hope to hear more about how we can use the initiatives that come from the framework to strengthen Wyndham's social and economic terms, especially as we emerge together from the impacts of COVID-19. Because I think the way we did things prior to COVID-19 will be quite different in the future in the way we do things, especially business. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor McIlhany.
And I will be supporting the report.
Good to hear. Thank you. Councillor Barlow, three minutes.
Thank you. I'm very happy to see this draft policy come through. The portfolio that I chair, cultural diversity, this policy fits very comfortably within that. And there's a lot of discussion, not only in the report tonight, but also in the draft policy that's going to be going out for community consultation, which I look very much forward to. But I'd also like to point out that our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, there is quite a fair bit of mention within this policy framework on that. Because in over 200 years, we still haven't got that right. And I think that a lot of the things that are in this policy, councillor is already involved in some way, but it's in an ad hoc manner. Because firstly, we split up, and there's a number of policy groups that fit within the Social and Economic Inclusion Framework. But what happens is, is that everybody's off doing their own thing. Sometimes the squeaky wheel happens to get the oil. And so having a Social and Economic Inclusion Framework such as this actually gives us a direction that we can work towards. It's a document that the community can go to to have a look to see how they fit and where they fit within it. And also for council and council staff, who also have been spending a lot of time in this. Because I know when we had the three portfolio committees get together and we had some special guest speakers so that they could actually put some meat around this framework, I realised then that, of course, this just isn't one policy portfolio group. This is a number. And I think that sometimes we can be off doing our own bit, but this document actually helps tie a lot of this together. And so I'm really looking forward to it being passed tonight. And then what the community have got to say about it. Because I think there's four objectives, with objective number four being in two parts. I think you'll see that those objectives alone actually include a number of the portfolios that we've been working on now for about three and a half years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Barlow. Are there any other speakers on this item? Councillor Khan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I would like to say that Wyndham is definitely growing fast, and there's no doubt about it. There's a lot of people from different backgrounds migrating here. 2016, as the data shows, that we have 42% people born overseas, compared to the Geelong, which is 34, and that makes us as a faster-growing and attracting a lot of people from different backgrounds. Now, it's good to see that Wyndham is also among the six local councils in Victoria State where we receive the large number of the settlers on humanitarian visa. So that shows that we are quite diverse and progressing fast. Now, definitely, I do have to agree that Wyndham City Councils face challenges that everybody else does in a country. Now, the local procurement policy and social and economic framework is needed, and it's good to see that my colleague has spoken about it, how important it is, and how that people can contribute at the moment for community consultation and feedback. But also, though, it has been invaded with social and economic inclusion. So good to see that how people like to put their feedbacks. And we look forward to see when it come for the final. I would be supporting definitely. And to be proud to be part of the Wyndham City as a resident because we know that Wyndham City Council have now half of the families have young children, which is 15 to 17-year age. So this is a really city where it's now changing every day. And we have to have a policy such as social and economic inclusion. And so I look forward to see the after ones come to the final, after the comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. Are there any other speakers? There being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carry unanimously councillor Villa Gonzalo. Item 6.4 Strategic and Town Planning, 6.4.1. The, yes, before we proceed, we'll ask councillor Marcus and councillor McIlhany to leave the chamber. Okay. 6.4.1 Planning Permit Application, WYP 11249/18. The use and development of 231 Leaks Road, Tragonina, with a multi-story integrated environment, entertainment and commercial facility, residential hotel and apartments. The report is outlined on pages 25 to 61. Recommendations are on pages 26 to 34, with the attachments from pages 3 to 89. Do I have a mover for the item? Councillor Barlow, do I have a second? Councillor Maynard? Councillor Barlow, do you wish to speak to the item?
Yes, thank you, just briefly. This land, for this type of development, was in the precinct structure plan that was developed. So it goes back to about, I think, 2004, if my memory serves me correctly. But I think that it's a development that is going to help kickstart that northern part of our municipality. And if you do go there and have a look at the intersection and have a look at what's happening around there, there's not a great deal. There's, across the road on the northern side of this particular development, there are some office space and in what looks like to me a very good area that's being set up for business and for commerce and commercialisation. And then further to the east, there's plenty of room for factories, et cetera, there. But there's nothing been built so far that actually looks like this. Now, it's not my ward, and up until recently, I wasn't, even though I know we've had briefings on this, I wasn't aware of exactly what it is that they're planning to do there. But I looked on page 39, the montage, well, I wouldn't call it a montage, but a photo of what we believe the development will look like, and it looks very modern. Something that, I can't say that we get to see this very often in an area that's very, very close to the industry as it is. So they're planning to do a whole range of things. I'm not going to go through it. It's all there for people to read. I think that it will help kickstart that area a little bit more. There's supposed to be, I believe, several hundred jobs available with the development. But as we know, councillors, we hand out a lot of permits, and they don't always get built. And especially around the CBD, by the looks of things. So I do hope that this, once this permit, if it's successful tonight, and they have a permit to go ahead and build this office space, these multi-story apartments or hotel, whatever it is that they're looking at doing, from what I've seen, I wish them, you know, I hope it kicks off because that area does need something to get it started.
Thank you very much, councillor Barlow. Are there any other speakers for this? Councillor Maynard, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be short and sweet. Suffice to say that certainly I welcome the officer's report and the recommendation. And I also look forward to something that is certainly lacking in this city to be provided, and that's the hotel accommodation. So I can't wait for that portion of it to be eventually built. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. Councillor Hooper, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'm speaking in support of the recommendation too, and I'd like to commend the officers for putting together the format of it, which highlights the fact that the electronic gaming machines are not supported by this council, which is in line with our POKI's policy that we passed during this term. Absolutely kudos to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Hooper. Are there any other speakers to the item? Councillor Shaw, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't need three minutes. But I must say, I will be supporting the recommendations from council officers this evening, including some of what councillor Hooper has highlighted just in terms of electronic gaming machines. They are actually in line with council's endorsed policy. I would like to actually commend council officers for the work that they've done actually on this permit. There are a number of significant conditions that come with the permit. I think it's going up to, you know, over 40 of those, which I think is excellent in terms of, clearly, this has been a very, from a council perspective, very well looked into, very well thought out in terms of what we actually need to ensure that if the development does go ahead, and most developments in this community do go ahead when they do get a permit, that they actually have a number of conditions on that, which I think is excellent. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, councillor Shaw. Are there any other speakers to the item? Councillor Khan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say that this is a great proposal, and good to see that if we go ahead with and approve this planning permit, will be a highest and tallest building in a corner of Leaks Road and Apartments. What a great proposal with coming 20.5.8 height, which makes about seven stories building and also the six-story. This is a combination of a great way of modern living, having a hotel and unit apartments, entertainment. Of course, there's conditions attached to this permit, which is also saying that the council's gambling policy has been addressed in this permit, which is good to see that. Now, there is a number of car parking spaces, 181 cars space are available. Its total development will make 6,400 square metre of office or three floors. What a great. I think when you go outside of these western suburbs, you go in southeastern suburbs, you see like suburbs where you see hotels and apartments and a bit of entertainment. It just talks about the modern. I'm proud to be part of that, the planning department, which is Urban Futures Thinking and approving the UDF like this one, which is a Tragonina South UDF, when they did the plan initially. And I think once that become a life, it will be a business centre, it will create a lot of jobs. And definitely, what is happening in the country now, the project like this definitely can give a confidence for the local economy. And as councillor Henry Barlow said, there will be several jobs. I'm sure if this project will go ahead, you will be having plumbers, electricians, the cleaners, the security guard, everybody working it. And what a great, big development. I think that will cost nearly excess of $200 million to build this. My only concern would be, I want to make sure this planning permit becomes a reality. Because we do need this kind of, and also though, tonight, if the council approving this is a statement for other councils and other investors, you can come and put a proposal like this where we are very strong and will give you approval because it's what Wyndham City is needed and what Urban Future is looking for to change the landscape of the Tragonina and particularly the townies surrounding the area. I look forward to see that once get in reality, and I will be happy to support and also see that when it comes, become a reality for everyone. So we can go one day and have a food or have an office there and utilise the facilities the builder is doing it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. Okay, is there any other speakers to the? Yes, councillor An, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. As the world councillor, I welcome the multi-story mixed-use facility in this gateway location. The first stage of this proposal brings 15 million investment into the area, and it will be a catalyst for this site and attract more investment and create more jobs, as councillor Khan mentioned. So I'm just pleased to support officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor An. Any other speakers? There being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favour of the resolution? Against? Carry it. Thank you. Tammy, can we get the, yes, thank you. Is councillor Mark? Great. Okay, we'll now proceed to the next item. Thank you. Item 6.5 Other Reports, 6.5.1 The Local Government General Election 2020 Service Agreement. The report is outlined on pages 62 to 66. The recommendation on page 63 and the attachments on pages 90 to 163. Do I have a mover? Councillor McIlhany, do I have a second? Councillor Khan? Councillor McIlhany, do you wish to speak to the item? You do not? Okay. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Hooper, you have three minutes.
Just quickly, I'm going to say to the people out there, we're estimating $200,000 is going to be spent by this council on enforcement for postal voting. Please don't let us spend that money. Vote away. It's just a complete waste. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Khan, councillor Hooper for that contribution. Sorry. Apologies.
It's a lot of money.
Any other speakers to this item? Councillor Khan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I think it's important to see that, and I'm a great believer now, the postal vote will be conducted, if that will go ahead, with it looks like. But if you could look at the comparison, Mr. Mayor, you see that enforcement, which is a tendency vote, will cost us less if it wasn't a COVID-19. I would push for that attendance vote. But again, because it's a COVID-19, I think we should adopt what it is, and officers have done a good job. So we look forward, there's one question that arrives here. It talks about 2020, election 2020. So we look forward, one, there's one question that arrives here. It talks about twenty twenty, election twenty twenty. So I'm not sure whether that will be possible or not, but hopefully if that will go ahead with it, I think we'll get to know how the postal vote get done. And, Mr Mayor, those people are thinking, and as councillor Tony Hooper have said that now, this is important now, is a, fines are there, so to order the fines, you must vote. Exercise your right. It's a democratic country. You must exercise your right. And I think uncontested ward leaflet is required one point three six per voter. So if you really, if you really work out the numbers, it's costing a council's over a million dollar entire council election. So that is a cost which we will have to go through it, but definitely that, there's no options. I wish if the state government can put some money towards it, so we can utilise that fund to do some other council work. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. Any other speakers to the item? There being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favour of the resolution. Against, carried. Item six point five point two, the President's Park Master Plan. The report is outlined on pages sixty-seven to seventy-four. The recommendation on page sixty-seven, the attachments on page one six four to one nine three. The move will be councillor Maynard. Do I have any other? Yes, councillor Gibbons. Councillor Maynard, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Five minutes.
Almost didn't have to put my hand up then. Thank you.
I just had a funny feeling.
Thank you. Certainly, it's my pleasure to move this motion, culminating in many, many, many hours of work by council officers. I would also like to acknowledge the considerable feedback and involvement by the many user groups during the public exhibition of this master plan. I would also like to acknowledge the work of my councillor colleagues, councillor Marcus and councillor Shaw in working with the many user groups and council officers in having input into this master plan. The proposed President's Park Master Plan recognises that walking, running and cycling are the most popular forms of active recreation in Wyndham by improving circulation and general amenity for those, these activities throughout the park. The plan caters to all members of the Wyndham community with the provision of a regional all abilities play space as per the play strategy. This reinforces President's Park as a destination where families can come together and have access to play outdoor, to play for outdoor fitness, cycle, skate, BMX, scooter, as well as community events. It also further improves formal sporting infrastructure recognised in the municipal and regional catchment of the sport on offer. This master plan has been prepared to guide the potential, future development and improvement of sport, recreation, open space and community infrastructure provisions at President's Park for the next ten years. President's Park is approximately seventy-five hectares in size and is one of, I consider, I consider a jewel in the crown of Wyndham sporting and open space provisions within this city. Its potential for future development as an iconic sporting and open space precinct over the next number of years within the recommendations of this master plan provides opportunity and certainty for the many clubs and users. It is timely for the redevelopment of existing infrastructure provisions to bring them up to those standards required for current users and also allow for greater female participation in sport. Whilst not everything the clubs and users have requested is included at this time, I certainly look forward to working with all those clubs and users to further enhance the capital infrastructure provisions moving forward. It is exciting to see the inclusion of a new pump track and I look forward to working with officers for the future provision of a mountain bike infrastructure at a location yet to be determined within Wyndham. However, the opportunity to select a location may well become clearer when the Wyndham sports strategy is updated. Some highlights of the President's Park Master Plan are for baseball, a new pavilion and upgrades to those diamonds. Hockey, a second full-size hockey pitch, upgrades to the existing hockey and softball pavilion. And for softball, upgrade the show pitch, softball fields to allow for adult competition and reorientate softball fields and convert those northern diamonds to rectangular multi-use fields. For the dog obedience, provide additional planning for shelter and traffic control, improve the grass surface for the dogs in the obedience area and seal the existing road to support future events and to limit dust. And something that's a little bit close to my heart, Mr Mayor, the park run circuit. To enhance the existing path system, providing the possibility of a new park run track and/or school cross-country route. Also, a regional all abilities play space is proposed in the location of the existing playground, including the skate park, as I've previously mentioned, picnic facilities and a new accessible unisex toilet, public toilet facility to replace the existing aging facility. A new outdoor fitness area with exercise equipment located nearby to the Loop Path Precinct and hockey, softball facilities. And something else in the master plan which has been included after consultations, the fenced dog area in the southeast corner. To extend the dog, the dog area to incorporate an area for quiet dogs, an additional drinking fountain, bowl and taps and to relocate the entry gates from the, away from the shared trail. As well, there is considerable works being carried out with the lake with the following, such as new plannings to enhance and reduce erosion, new path boardwalk shelters and seats, a new section of sealed path to the east side and potential location for public art creation of a section of the Arts and Heritage Trail. I'm immensely pleased by the development of the Warriby Regional Park that is being proposed to the north. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. Are there any other speakers to the item? Councillor Shaw, you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, good summary, councillor Maynard. I won't repeat any of the things that you've highlighted in terms of the enhancements that will be made as part of the President's Park Master Planning. I think it is important to highlight more broadly is that tonight we're considering somewhere in the vicinity of forty-three million dollars worth of investment into two very important spaces in our community to enhance them for our, our community, our residents, our ratepayers and the people that actually use those facilities, which I think is outstanding, you know, that sort of investment over a ten-year period and the work that's gone in to do that sort of planning, certainly for President's Park. I won't jump ahead to Churnside Park just yet because we're not considering that. That, you know, I think is excellent from this council's point of view. We've done a number of significant master plans this council term and this is another one of those in terms of enhancing a very significant space for our community. So I'd like to commend not only my ward councillors but all councillors also who've participated in this process and also the council officers as well. Well done.
Thanks very much, councillor Shaw. Do I have any other? Yes, councillor Marcus, three minutes.
Thank you much. Thank you very much. Well, congratulations to councillor Maynard and Mayor and, but all councillors, but also to our council officers. This is very important and I will keep harping on about our virus because people now are going out enjoying their parks and gardens. And so this is, this will just be something very special for them that when we keep developing this and they will take. Now, Peter, councillor Maynard outlined most of it, but I would just like to say the car parking has always been a problem over there. So that's really good to see that we're looking at that. Now, the youth with the public art, I really do, I have a wonderful book that was written in America, how they brought in the youth to do wonderful things, designs and everything else. And I do hope that the council officers will look at using our youth and then they will take ownership of the park. So if anyone wants to read this lovely book I've got, very happy to bring it in because let the youth do it, the youth will come, the youth will look after it. Public art, I'm like councillor Hooper, love our public art and I just hope that we can put some very exciting pieces in there. And of course, the events infrastructure, you know, hopefully we'll have all of our events back once we get through this. Mightn't see any this year unfortunately, but hopefully next year. I think the other thing that's very important is the landscape. And to enhance our Warriby River, how lucky is this city to have such a beautiful river running right through the middle of us. And I think we need to thank Mr John Forrester and his team for the work that they put into the Warriby River to make sure that it is a healthy river. And I think if we can work again for the habitat of all of our wonderful animals that are down there and our possums and everything else will be really good. I think we really need to give credit to our former and past councillors to have had the vision to put this lovely big piece of land to one side. So I think a very big thank you to those, many of them sadly and not alive today. But I think the people of Wyndham should be very grateful and very thankful that they will now have this beautiful park with all of the sports. And furthermore, I'm just so happy to see the public art being put in there as well. So well done to absolutely everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Marcus. Councillor Hooper, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. When we first started our term on this council, there was the Indian Cultural Precinct that me and councillor Barlow were a part of. A discussion with the community about a pretty controversial thing at the time. And what turned out as a result of that consultation is what the community really needed was something that celebrated over a hundred and sixty cultures together. Something that brought all of Wyndham voices into one space. Now, what was a natural discussion point was President's Park and what happens out there. And I just have to say, even though the state government walked away from that, because honestly they did, the fact that we are still looking at a public art space and I like that celebrates the culture of our community as one is absolutely magical, especially at this time where COVID nineteen is going to be bringing a lot of doubt and confusion into the community. Bringing the people together and celebrating what makes us tick is absolutely essential. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, councillor Hooper. Do I have any other speakers on the item? Councillor Khan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I'd like to say that it's quite a big piece of land, it's seventy-five hectares, which is a hundred and eighty-five point twenty-five acres of land. And once it's get done, as councillor Peter Maynard have explained about it, how beautiful will be in number of activities we can do, just not like a normal park. It's absolutely jewel in the crown. I'd like to see that there's a, there's a big financial implications once we go through the part of this master plan implementation. Obviously, these are twenty, almost twenty point eight million dollar were required and that is the estimated to develop this entire park. Now, this money needed to be done from the state government because we have to apply for that, the state government to give some grants such as growing suburb funds or local sports and trust active funds to contribute. So make sure this, the vision we carry, all of us, we can make that a reality. And it's important to see that how councillor Tony Hooper picked up, I was there to, when we were running a draft consultation regarding Indian Culture Precinct and it's pretty sad to see that it's not part of this, this park. But good to see that, you know, park have been utilised in many ways. At the end of the day, it's going to help the community who needs it. But I'd like to put a note, Mr Mayor, I hate to support, but I will be supporting it because I'm a bit of a jealous, why we do not have so much of these beautiful parks and investment in Harrison Ward? Because we have a fastest growing, the new migrant community. I look forward to see that, you know, there's more need to be done in Point Cook and Troganina, which just looks like a really a flatland at the moment. Good to see that if this council can bring that kind of good project for that, the suburbs of that townie and Troganina in future. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. Do you, is there any other speakers? Councillor Gibbons, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Marcus mentioned the old stages and most of my dinner, I'm still alive.
I said former and past.
Thank you. Some of the, some of the councillors might be interested. This started as a result of myself and the previous town clerk going to Aubrey Wodonga and seeing their park and trees named after former mayors and shy presidents. And we came down and I spoke to the town clerk and I think we got that going up there. And we called it President's Park after shy presidents. And we're supposed to have a tree up there for every past shy president. But no, most of the trees are not there now. Eh? No, mine's not there.
Trees probably died as well.
Even, even, even the plaque that was on the wall up there that talks about that is gone. So I'd like to see the plaque, I'd like to see the plaque replaced. But that's how it started many years ago and it's amazing that, it's amazing that we're coming all this far down the track and we're now starting to see a lot of development there. And I'm very pleased about it. It's very good. Thank you, councillors, for your support.
Thanks, councillor Gibbons. And I have no doubt after tonight, you're a Facebook hit with that contribution. So thank you for that. We'll get you a Facebook profile so you can have a look. All right, any other speakers for the item? No, there being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favour. Against, carried unanimously. Six point five point three, Churnside Park Master Plan. The report is outlined on pages seventy-five to eighty-three, the recommendation on page seventy-five, with the attachments on eighty-four to one oh four. Do I have a move up? Councillor Maynard, councillor Shaw, I will second it. Councillor Maynard, do you wish to speak to the item?
I certainly do, Mr Mayor, and I certainly, on a bit of a roll tonight with, you know, these two master plans coming to fruition. I certainly hope that this one gets passed as well. Certainly along with Wyndham City Council and many in the community, I have long held the view that Churnside Park is one of the gems in Wyndham sporting and community open space crown. The, this master plan outlines the development and recognises the important contribution that formal sports make to Warriby and the broader municipality with a range of enhancements and improvements. It improves connectivity and access both physically and visually across the park, providing better entry-exit points and circulation throughout. It celebrates the outstanding environmental and cultural importance of the Warriby River environment with improvements to the Warriby River Shared Trail, Bungie's Hole area and the River Riparian Zone. Thought I'd throw that one in. That's not something I come up with all that often. This master plan is another step in ensuring that the whole Wyndham community will, will be able to access and use this vast area of land, which in part includes such facilities like Churnside Park, the Warriby Outdoor Pool, Warriby Bowls and the Warriby Tennis Club and the Warriby Fishing Club. There will be another master plan that looks at Bungie's Hole and all that pristine parkland surrounding the Warriby River, with which I hope will place special emphasis on resurrecting the original tiled pool beyond the fishing club. Also, a part of the report encapsulates the whole essence of this master plan and I, again, thank staff, council, our council staff very much who have painstakingly guided this process as well as all users who have, who's valued input has been considered in formulating this master plan. I also acknowledge the process of consultation and discussion that has been undertaken between council officers, my Iremu ward councillors, councillor colleagues and the Warriby Cricket Club in reaching what I believe is a win-win outcome in finalising the agreement, which will eventually see this great club transition from playing cricket at Churnside Park to the yet to be developed outstanding sporting facility that will be bounded by Alfred's Road, Princess Highway and Galvin Road in Warriby. I would also like to thank officials from the Warriby Fishing Club and the Warriby Bowls Club in also providing their valued feedback in this process, which will see the fishing club remain at their current location and also the Bowls Club relocate into a new building that will replace their old and existing building. The new building will be relocated within the current Bowls Club footprint, so they won't be moving very far. I also would like to mention the Warriby Football Club, who have worked in collaboration with other users and this council in assuring that the recently completed and magnificent looking sporting and community building that was erected is part of a great precinct for all Wyndham's community to enjoy. I also note that whilst there isn't a great increase in car parking in this sensitive area with the fence on the northern side of the pavilion remaining where it is, there will be a net increase of approximately twenty car parking spaces in the car park surrounding, surrounded by the Bowls, Tennis and Cricket Club and Football Club. Pages are going a bit slow tonight. Finally, I would like to request the council officers liaise with the football club during all these future works and a time that they consider suitable to see if install- all these future works and a time that they consider suitable, to see if installation of an NBN landline can be incorporated at no cost to council, thus removing a barrier to the viability and reliability of the current NBN setup. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. Do I have another, yes councillor Shaw?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, thank you again councillor Maynard for that very good summary in terms of the good work that has gone on into this Churnside Park master plan. It actually started, your story won't be as interesting as yours, John, but it started when we were talking about Wyndham Park earlier on in this term and when I wanted to see better connections from our new Wyndham Park into Churnside Park. And we started talking about doing master planning work on Churnside Park, probably a little overdue, but great to see that the work started to commence with that. I actually think this is a very good final master plan for this community. There's been a lot of stakeholder engagement on this, not just with the broader community, but for the stakeholders that are actually within Churnside Park and use that. And they've all put forward very good submissions. And I know all the ward councillors, I think, have spoken, you know, to quite a few of those over the course of this master planning work, which has been terrific. And I think we've got a very good outcome based on the amount of consultation and stakeholder work that we did do, not just with council officers, but also ward councillors as well. One, one of the things I did want to talk about was, and what I did want to see included, was around the Werribee Outdoor Pool. And we've, obviously at the moment, it's our second, our only, our second aquatic facility. And it's a very loved part by many people in our community, our Werribee Outdoor Pool. A lot of passionate people that want to continue to stay open, obviously for longer hours. And we actually trialled that this year. But also one of the things I wanted to see in particular, as a user of the facility over summer and with my son, is better aquatic play areas for young children and for families. And it's great to see that this has actually been included into the master plan and actually had the support of my ward councillors as well, which has been terrific. So I think overall this has been an excellent piece of work with a lot of consultation, a lot of work has gone into it. It's going to be a very significant investment, it's really important for our community. And finally, I am pleased to see that the Werribee Cricket Club has agreed to actually relocate to the Alfred Road Reserve. As Peter has said, this will actually be an excellent facility. But just as importantly, it'll be their own facility where they can continue to grow their clubs. But also, some people might not have known, that the Werribee Junior Cricket Club actually has not had a home for many years in our community. And some of the people at the Werribee Cricket Club have spoken to myself, Peter and Heather at times over that. It's great to see that with their relocation, that the junior cricket club will go with them as well and will also have a home going forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Shaw. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Marcus?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, councillor Shaw and Maynard have comprehensive reports. I'd like to come from the heritage trees that we have down there. These trees were planted before the churnsides by Von Mueller and we must protect those. And at the moment, we do have some of those very large gum trees fenced off. But I would like to see something there. I'd like to see some flowers. I've been harping on for a botanical garden for a long time, but it's not been forthcoming. To you councillor Maynard, NBN hopefully will come through Watten Street by the end of this year. It is a very difficult time for us because we lose our internet every single solitary day because everybody's working from home. So that's really good. I think it's been wonderful that we've had very, very good consultation from our groups. I think the groups that have been down in Churnside Park have always been very passionate and have loved what we have down there, like the Anglers Club who built their own pavilion. And also the, everyone seems to just take that as, you know, they want to be part of it and make it better each day. So I don't think it's been easy for Cam. I think he's had to, and his staff have had to work really hard because, you know, when you get very compassionate and people, that they just don't want to lose what they've got. And it's so, it's been really good that they have been working so hard. I think the beauty also is that we will be tying Churnside Park into Wyndham Park. I hear reports, I haven't been able to go over there yet with my wobbly knee, but I hear wonderful reports from many, many residents saying how much they love Wyndham Park. And I think we are so lucky that we've got such beautiful parks in our city that we can make even better of. Because I think if you all take a look at when we see our developments and you see all these ugly grey roofs with no backyards, at least our people have got somewhere where they can go out and play. So well done to all of our council staff. Thank you very much. And I look forward to seeing it all finished. The only other little thing I'd like is a dance stage down there for the dancers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Marcus. Are there any other speakers? There being none, we'll now proceed to a vote. All those in favour? Against, carried. Item 6.5.4, the notice of intention to lease part of 1 to 5 Saltwater Promenade Point Cook for a Telstra telecommunications facility. Reports on 105 to 109, recommendation 105, attachments 110 to 113. Do I have a mover? Councillor Hooper, councillor Khan will second. Councillor Hooper, do you wish to speak to it? You have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'm rapt to see this coming before us. If anyone's been down to Saltwater Coast with a mobile phone, it usually ends up becoming a very heavy paperweight because of all the black spots that are down there. We have got a policy in place now so that the telecommunications companies can come in and have a look at what they can offer our community and go through the steps before they come to our land and go through this process. Now, I know some people might ask questions as to, well, you put a votophone tower down there, why aren't we whacking the Telstra stuff on there? Because of the height restrictions of the raft, we've got to be careful about what we do. We don't really want to hamper the heritage value of the raft site after all. So this Telstra site, if it goes ahead and through the right processes, will absolutely address serious telecommunications black spot issues in my community. And I'm absolutely looking forward to seeing it unfold. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Hooper. Are there any other speakers to the item? Councillor Khan, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what councillor Tony Hooper have covered up, it's important that the coverage should be available for the new residents. Now, my only concern is now that once we approve that today, it's going to be published on Star Weekly. I wish we can have more than publications because not many people are reading Star Weekly. So there has to be some, I possibly say that, you know, just more than one printed media can help and pass the message what the community is doing, what council is doing. I'm pretty happy to see that $24,000 will be, per annum, will be given to the council for the next 20 years at the rate of 4% CPI every year. And this tower, once it get approved, will be 24 metres height and having six antennas on it. So I think, I'm sure that the residents surrounding the area can get a better coverage and hopefully the Telstra can do a good job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to support it.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. There being none more speakers, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favour? Against, carried. Item 6.5.5, the assembly of councillors, the reports and recommendations on 114 with the attachment on 115. Do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard, councillor Villa Gonzalo, do you wish to speak to the item? Councillor Maynard. Any other speakers? No. Proceed to a vote. All those in favour? Against, carried. Item seven, notices of motion, 7.1, notice of motion 586, financial support package for international students. Councillor Khan is clearly the mover of the item. Do I have a second up for the notice of motion? I'll second it. You've got five minutes. Go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for your supporting the motion. I would like to say that we have state, I like to read the notice of motion. So council will take a note of, the council will write a letter to this Victorian government to consider the financial international student support package to support international students residing in Victoria and facing financial hardship. That also the financial international student support package we seek for the state government of Victoria to pass should include support to all international students, including all any students currently enrolled with any higher education provider, university, TAFE or international colleges and any other private school provider. In relation to this notice of motion, Mr. Mayor, state government have all have done great work. They've passed the package. So I'd just like to say that, you know, they have, they have done a great job. And if the letter can be given to them as a, as a support, that will be great. And I look forward to see that one day in translation will become beneficiary. Definitely the city of Wyndham have many international students, those are residing. And that will, I'm sure, they can see that if they're facing hardship, they can be a beneficiary of, which is state government already have done it. I'd like to put in a notice, a note that I do not have any conflict or interest of anything. If anybody thinks I do not run any institute or anything at the moment. So it's just in the better interest for the wider international community and society. So how the state government can support that our international student, which is our greatest revenue source of Victoria State. And we like to show them in tough time, like over 19, we are with you and we're cared about you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Khan. Do I have any other speakers for the item? Councillor Hooper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'm just going to be speaking against this because I think it's actually a waste of time. The idea, I understand the idea, but the state government has already announced a package, a $45 million package on Study Melbourne. And reading directly from the website, the International Student Emergency Relief Fund will provide payment of up to 1,100 to vulnerable international students who have lost their job or have had significant reduction to their employment or are facing financial hardship as a result of COVID-19. So it's on point with what you're saying. I just don't think we need to do it because it's already been, the letter, because it's already been done. So that's essentially the argument. I don't think we need to do this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Hooper. Councillor McIlhoney first, then I'll go to councillor Shaw. Thank you.
Yeah, look, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also support councillor Hooper. It was acknowledged last week, the 29th of April, that $45 million came from the state government. And councillor Khan acknowledged that in his social media, so I'm not sure why this had to come tonight. I also acknowledge that he knows, he has noted he does not have a conflict of interest. And I'd just like to note on our start of our agenda, it states on number three, it is the responsibility of councillors to declare a conflict of interest. And it's not for other councillors to declare or say whether they've got a conflict of interest. But I will say the notice of motion came in on Western Institute of Technology email. So that's all I'm going to say. And I won't be supporting this recommendation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor McIlhoney. Councillor Shaw, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually going to support this tonight, councillor Khan. I think, I think there's some valid points. There already has been some announcements in this space from the state government, things moving very quickly around COVID-19 in terms of funding and whatnot. I think the intent was right when the notice of motion was written. There has been some things that have, you know, progressed since then. The notice of motion is here. I think you've acknowledged that in your actual, in your notes. I think you also said maybe we should write a letter of thanks, you know, to the state government. And I know that's actually not on the motion, but, you know, ultimately in the end, I think, you know, we will be writing to them if this passes. But, you know, I don't think this is extremely controversial. I think it comes with good intent. I think it is about supporting international students and not just the ones in Wyndham, but those in Victoria. And I think it's something the government acknowledged as well, which is why the funding has been actually directed in the first place. You know, I, you know, I think, you know, also from my perspective, you know, I'll be supporting that tonight. Thank you, councillor Khan.
Thank you very much, councillor Shaw. Are there any other speakers to the item? Councillor Arn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make clear that I support government to provide financial support to international students. But I also want to highlight that, as my fellow councillor mentioned, that the state government already announced the 45 million emergency relief fund last Thursday, so for international students who are facing financial hardships as a result of the coronavirus. And more than 150,000 international students currently living in Victoria are also eligible, eligible for state government relief programme. And those legally allowed to work in Victoria are also eligible for the Work, Working in Victoria initiative. I want to take this opportunity to thank the state government for his, for their work, as you can see, being done to support international students. And so if you are international students who want to find out more information, to register your interest, please visit studymelbourne.victoria.edu. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Arn. Are there any other speakers on the item? Councillor Maynard, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be quite short and sweet. I think that the council, my council colleagues who have spoken thus far have covered it to the extent that I also was of the understanding that funding had been provided. And I stand to be corrected, but I thought, I thought there was also something mentioned by the federal government. I could be wrong. But I think, I think it includes a number of halves, that it's only considering half the students, because there are other students in this community that work and who have lost their jobs as well and are still required to pay their fees and those sorts of things. We should be, we should be, in all essence, ensuring that we support all students. The other half that it includes, Mr. Mayor, is that it's a half, another half baked notice of motion, vote grabbing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Maynard. Are there any other, yes councillor Barlow? Three minutes.
Thank you. To be honest, the fact that it came out last Wednesday that there was $45 million towards this very item, the sensible thing would have been to withdraw the notice of motion before it actually went into the agenda, which the agenda isn't finalised until Thursday. What all, at the very least, because I am a supporter of, you know, students, I don't care where they come from, whether they're third or fourth generation Australians, or they're over here to get an education and then go back to their own country with their education to, to support their countries. The motion should have been amended, at the very least, for the letter to be written to the federal government. The federal government decides how many international students can come, when they can come, who can come and who can't. In fact, I remember Bob Hawke during the time of Tiananmen Square actually allowed Chinese students, they, he told them that they didn't have to go back to China and that their student visas could be turned into a permanent visa to allow them to stay in Australia. So a federal government is really in control of all of this because, and I noticed here in item two, we talked about higher education providers, university tapes, vocational, international colleges and that. All of those licences are controlled by the federal government. So I think really, it was, it's, I really don't understand why it was moved and seconded, to be honest. What it should have done is either withdrawn it or amended it to write the letter to the federal government to ensure that they, who are pumping billions of dollars into a whole range of different things, to put money into international students from there. And I think that that might have been the far more sensible approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Barlow. Are there any other speakers to the item? Councillor Marcus, you have three minutes.
Just very quickly, it's very interesting to listen to everybody's conversations tonight. And yes, I think it was a good idea at the time that councillor Khan was very considerate of our international students. I have two nieces that were international students in America and they got sent home straight away as soon as the virus came. So they're home here in Victoria, sitting, not being able to do anything because they don't know whether they'll be allowed to go back to America. But my understanding was that when we went to Canberra, we spoke to the Minister for Education and he said, don't ask us for schools and that because we pass all the money down, down the track to the state government. The state government is the person, is the department that looks at all of our schools and that. But anyway, this is here before us. We either vote for it or we don't. So I would just like to support councillor Khan tonight. I will be voting for this notice of motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Marcus. Are there any other speakers to the item? Yes, I will revert back to you councillor Khan. Okay, you get three minutes as a write-off reply.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, can I say that Victoria take it proud to be given $45 million compared to other states. The South Australia have given 13.8 million, some other state have. I think this is, we all can be proud of our state. It doesn't really matter when, it's a good thing, is we're all now supporting international students. And I take it not that councillor Peter Maynard have said that there may be a student who's left out, but I think it's good to see that, you know, anybody who's looking Australia as international student, a destination, would be a proud on Victoria State, how Victoria have given $45,000, $45 million. Now, the motion was put forward before they have announced.
Now, the motion was put forward before they have announced, so I'm sure that, you know, it does not hurt if we all support today. And I'd like to, I'd like to respect those people, think it's nonsense, we can withdraw that. But can I say that now, we all take a pride when we want to stand for the good things and we all be proud to Victoria, and because it says on number plate, "Victoria Education Estate", so I'm proud to be support and looking forward to support that from my colleagues to be that notice of motion, so we can truly be education estate of Victoria. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councillor Khan. We will now proceed to a vote. All those in favour of the resolution, please raise your hand. Against?
I call a division, Mr Mayor.
Well, I haven't declared yet, but you can do that after. Okay, so the resolution passed. Are you now declaring a division?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillors Gibbons, Shaw, Villa Gonzalo, Gilligan, Marcus and Khan and Arn. Against? Councillors McIlhane, Maynard, Barlow and Hooper. The resolution has passed. Thank you. Item number 10, questions with notice from the public gallery. Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and as is the case, given COVID-19 arrangements, we still have received questions with notice, which I will proceed to read this evening, and these will be recorded for the purposes of the minutes. And also, those people asking questions will provide us with those responses in writing. So we have two questions this evening, both of which have come from Mr Arnev Sati. So I will read those questions and also provide the responses. So councillors and Mr Mayor, please bear with me while I do that. Question one, please provide a list of projects and developments that are classified as commercial in confidence in the last two terms of the council, 2012, 2016, 2016, 2020. So the response to that question, Mr Mayor, is thank you for your question. Again, a similar question was asked by you at the ordinary council meeting on the 7th of April 2020, and the response to this question is contained within the minutes, which outlines, I quote, "If any entity deems certain information to be commercial in confidence, then it should be treated on a commercial, in confidence, confidential basis and not be disclosed to third parties. Therefore, a list of the projects and development is unable to be provided", and that is the response to that question. Question two, how much has Wyndham City Council spent on the Bridge Hotel every financial year since 2015? And how much yearly revenue has been collected or projected to be collected from it every year? And again, Mr Mayor, the response here is that Wyndham City Council purchased the Bridge Hotel in 2016 as one of its strategic land acquisitions. The hotel was subsequently leased to the MOL Pub Group in 2019. The contracts relating to both the acquisition and also the lease are commercial in confidence, so I'm unable to provide these details. I can however state that the acquisition was based on market valuations at the time and the award of the lease based on a competitive tender process. The lease rental is also consistent with commercial market values. As part of the site acquisition in 2016, and those councillors on council at the time will recall, council incurred expenses of around $45,000, which related to its building investigation and due diligence processes. Also, since 2017-18, council has incurred expenses of around $15,000 for maintenance and other outgoing. That is the complete response in that regard, Mr Mayor, and there are no other questions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam CEO, we'll now proceed to the next item. Item number 11, councillor delegates' reports, 11.1, again stated. Report 117 to 118, recommendations on 118 with the attachment on 119 to 122. Councillor Gibbons, Councillor Khan. Thank you. Councillor Arn, do you wish to speak to your report?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, we'll proceed to a vote in terms of the adoption. All those in favour? Against, carried. Okay, that's it. That concludes our meeting at 8.15pm. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.